Mayor Martini, Abson, Councilmembers Abbott.
Here.
Lawson, Smith, Bybee, Deere.
Here.
City Attorney Adams.
Here.
Acting City Manager Krutz.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Okay. If you'll please stand, Barbara West will do our invocation from the Sparks Church at Nazarene. Hi Barbara.
Ron, would you all bow your heads with me in prayer? Our heavenly Father, Lord, how thankful we are for the dawning of another new day. And Lord, we're thankful too for the sunshine and that you've held back the floodwaters this week. We pray you'd continue to hold them back for our city, Lord, and all of our residents. We're so thankful that we live in the United States of America where we can gather together with our voters and people on City Council and all of the other offices that we voted. We pray, Lord, for our Sparks City Council today. We'd ask you, first of all, to touch our Mayor Martini and heal him thoroughly. And we thank you for all of these fine men and women who are on the council, asking you today to give them the wisdom for the business at hand, because we, the residents, have entrusted them to do our business. So we pray that it's for our good and to your glory. And we thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you Barbara. If you remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, please, Mr. Lawson.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, I'm going to open up the public comment. I do have one card. Anybody else wishing to speak in the audience, fill out a card before we can. Anonymous, go on up. You have three minutes. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, council members. I'm speaking anonymously due to the retaliation we re-survivors of domestic violence. That is, we've had more than one attempt on our life. Are, is this on?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Are receiving against us and our children. The retaliation is being conducted by both law enforcement and the courts. I will just pick up where I left off last time. There is a clause in the Sparks City Charter that states that if any person enters into an illegal contract, that they may be personally liable. And of course, we're talking about the contract that the City of Sparks has with the document shredding company and the courts under the authority of Heidi Shaw. She is the Municipal Court Executive. She is putting the child abuse court case files into the bin in which the contractor is coming and picking up that bin and shredding the documents. Now, under NRS 195, which is parties, the city council members become party to it because, as you remember in Sparks v. Sparks, the Nevada Supreme Court writ, wrote in their order that the council members are culpable because they are funding the contract to shred the child abuse evidence. We also would like to speak about Marsha Burke Bigler. She is a Washoe County Commissioner, and she went on live TV and stated that yes, the child abuse evidence is being shredded by the courts that she oversees. The Washoe County Board of Commissioners oversees the justice courts and the district courts. It's important to know that the district court is the appellate court for the municipal court. So when the district court gets the child abuse case in appeal, the district court also destroys the child abuse evidence. The district court is the appellate court for what is called the limited jurisdiction courts. The limited jurisdiction courts not only are the municipal court, but also the justice court. You have a justice court here in Sparks. So we will be seeking to see if the council is culpable because the justice court is in Sparks and Janine Baker sent us an email that she is destroying the evidence of child abuse. So we have that memorialized. The other thing I'd like to bring up at this time is that we had a very significant ruling in the rural, in a rural court. And just so that you know, the state of Nevada has two judiciaries. A judiciary for populations over 400,000, Sparks is in that judiciary, and then for populations under 400,000, the rural courts are under that judiciary. The (noise) I have just 30 seconds. Thank you. The, and so in closing, Sparks is in the judiciary of the 400,000 population, which has a whole different set of rules, and I would encourage you to look that up. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim Szysinski, come on down. Welcome, Kim.
Good afternoon. My name is Kim Szysinski, and I'm here to represent 39 North Downtown. We are a nonprofit community organization with all volunteers, created to put a focus to help create a vibrant downtown. We are going to give a three-minute update presentation to you once a month. One of our six board members will come in and do that. And it is an update for businesses and what our, what our membership is doing. The first thing I'd like to say is that very exciting news for Victorian Saloon. They're going to put pavers in the back and going to create dining back there. So it's going to help that whole corridor in that alley back there. This summer is going to be our third event. For a third time, we're doing the 39 North Marketplace. We have successfully recreated this Thursday night, and we know we are successful because all of the vendors want to come back. Our main goal this year is for outreach and marketing to our community. We're excited to say that Art Town is coming to Sparks. And in the four dates in July, we are going to have a BASK event. So it's going to be bands, food, and dancers that will participate in one of those four, or all of the four, but in some kind of manner. So we're, we're excited to bring Art Town. We're also planning an arts and music festival, an art show. And this is, this is the logo that we've created. We don't think it's going to happen this year, but it's something on the horizon that we're very excited about. Something new that's coming is the Sierra Nevada Lavender and Honey Festival. It's going to be June 25th, and it's going to be higher-end vendors for women specifically, but it's going to be a great event, and we hope you all can attend. We're going to be at the Nevada Young Professionals Network that's having an event. It's, we're one of 30 local nonprofits that will have a tabletop there. It's at Habitat for Humanity, which is now on, on Green Bay, which is a great location. We're also going to be an exhibitor for Earth Day for our third year, which is going to be April 23rd, if you come out. And then a special events volunteer meeting on February 22nd. We now have over 20 volunteers signed up for our, this summer's event. And Angela has gone out to local Boy Scouts, and she had a meeting on the 9th to show them about the volunteer opportunities at the marketplace. So we're hoping to have a lot of kids volunteer for our event this year. And finally, 39 North and our generous sponsors has invested into Engine 39 Train. I hope you've all have been able to see this. It's for kids and adults, and we want to have it at special events all throughout the city. We, the train, or the train is going to be March 4th at the Shamrock Shuffle, and we're going to give free rides on that night, or that afternoon, without the beer, I'm sure. Not, and that's our update for today. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kim. Anybody else wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Move to number five, agenda. Approve the agenda. Anybody want to change anything, pull anything? Okay, looking for a motion.
Can you see over there?
Oh, I forgot about that. Mr. Lawson. I'm looking up here.
Let's move to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay. Ms. Bybee.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All, please vote.
I was wondering if you couldn't see that.
I know. I wasn't looking over that way. Okay. Minutes. Consideration possible approval of the minutes of the Sparks City Council workshop for the sanitary sewer model update of January 23rd, 2017, and the regular Sparks City Council meeting of January 23rd, 2017. Mr. Lawson.
Move to approve.
Mr. Abbott.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Number seven, announcements, presentations, recognition items. 7.1, presentation from Women and Children Center of the Sierra. Francine, come on up. Welcome.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here today. Thank you for giving us some time. My name is Charles White. I am a volunteer board member of the Women's and Children's Center of the Sierra, and I'm here, quite frankly, to say thank you. Thank you for your support of our organization and the work that we do. Also here to tell you a little more about what we do. And let's see here, can you see? Yes. All right, we have the slides. Our mission is simple in concept and monumental in effort. We work hard to help women escape poverty and provide a better life for themselves and their children. In this next slide, go ahead, thank you, you'll see many of the activities and programs that we provide. We do this for women in all of Washoe County, Reno, Sparks, as far north as Spanish Springs area, as far east as Fallon, Fernley, some women come in from there, and some women come up from Carson City. So it's a very broad geographic area that we serve. I'll let you read over the list, but two of these that I want to point out are that we are most known for our diaper bank. And the following, not yet, but in the following slide, you'll see just how many diapers that we do hand out. It can be as many as 500 on average per day. That is, yes, it's a very significant number. We do this because women desperately need clean diapers, and this is something that I had no idea was such a need until I got involved. You see, women who are forced to decide between diapers and food often choose food. And in that situation, they will often take a dirty diaper, clean it out, and put it back on their child. The best-case scenario there is that the child gets diaper rash. The worst case is that it gets kidney infections. That results in trips to the emergency room, very expensive trips, which quite frankly, are paid for by you and me. So we're working hard to eliminate, eliminate those trips to the ER. Another one of the items on the list, bottom right corner, is the free children's library. In that case, we're giving away free books to children, age-appropriate books, obviously. And it's to encourage kids to read. You may very well know that one of the considerations that cities and counties take on when they look at creating new prisons is the literacy rate when children leave third grade. There is a very direct correlation between whether or not a child can read at the end of third grade at grade level, and the likelihood of them going into incarceration at the juvenile or adult level. By giving the free books away, we're giving children the chance to say, would you read this to me? Or what does this word mean? Or how do you say this word? We realize that we can't solve all the issues in our community, but it is one way that we can give back, and we are blessed that many people give us volumes of books to hand out, and we do so freely whenever we can. In this next slide, yes, you'll see some of the stats. We serve over 300 women on average each month. We give away anywhere from 7,000 to 10,000 diapers per month. As I mentioned, that can be as many as 500 in a day. We've helped 114 women secure employment. I want to make it clear, the women that come to us are not looking for handouts. They want to get out of the cycles of poverty. They do not want government support. They want jobs, and they want security for themselves and their children. They frankly have many of the same goals that you and I do for our own families, perhaps at a different scale. They want good jobs with benefits. They want health care for themselves and their children, and they want good education for their children. And they want to be able to provide this for their children rather than receiving handouts. We've helped 24 women attain their high school equivalency exam and test. I used to call that the GED back in my day. We would do all this with a budget of approximately $194,000 per year. You'll understand that that varies depending on donations. We have one full-time staff, that's Pam Russell, our executive director, four part-time staff, and a number of very dedicated volunteers that make our programs possible. Some of the, the concepts of our organization. Poverty is a day-to-day crisis that is very difficult for many women to get out of. Many of them do not have the resources that you and I often take for granted. We have, as I mentioned, a number of services and volunteers. All of our services are based on a mission, which, as I said, is to help women escape poverty and provide a secure life for themselves and their children. The "Yes, I can" down there at the bottom, many of the women who come to us wonder if they can achieve those goals. And our job, quite frankly, is to help them get to a position where they say, yes, I can do this. It takes a lot of encouragement. Many of our women don't succeed on the first time, and that's okay with us. We're looking for the effort, not a headcount of accomplishment the first time around. And with that, I will turn it over to Francine.
Francine Burge, Special Event Supervisor for the record, but I'm actually here as a volunteer of the Women and Children's Center of the Sierra. And I'm also here to kick off the City of Sparks Jewelry Drive. Every year, the Women and Children's Center has a great event called Old Treasures, New Futures. Our theme this year is True Colors, where we turn around and sell vintage and used jewelry and accessories, and all that money goes back to the Women and Children of Sierra. So the past couple of months, we've been holding a drive events for, for jewelry throughout the city. And now we're going to be here in, in a couple of buildings in the City of Sparks. So we will be at City Hall, we'll be at Alf Sorensen, and over at Parks and Rec. And from what I hear, we already have a donation in the room. Counselor.
I went to the line.
Oh, I hear that. Mostly scarves. Scarves and jewelry. So.
Thank you very much.
Everyone else in Sparks, get all, clean out their closets. And I apply the champagne all the time, so I have scarves like you would not believe. So yeah, so, good luck on the drive.
Thank you.
Very much.
And I will just end it by saying the event is on March 9th. Please come to the event. It's $10 to get in. It's free if you bring a package of diapers. And then it includes a glass of champagne and all the shopping you would want. So we'll open that up for questions.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. Shirley, did you have something to say?
I, I just had a question. How long has the Women's and Children's Center been here in, here in northern Nevada?
I believe, and forgive me, I'm fairly new to the organization, but still learning some of the stats. I believe we opened 2006 or 2008.
And then, do you, are you recipients of United Way funding at all?
I don't believe so. In recent board meetings, I do not recall direct funding from the United Way. We do refer people to a wide variety of organizations because we don't offer every service imaginable.
In your location, you, you have an office that you work out of?
Yes. We're located on Neal Road, close to the south end of the airport, as a general reference, in the same building complex as a police substation and Boys and Girls Club.
I think what you're doing is amazing, and $194,000 budget. I can't even imagine when we look at all the budgeting that, that we do with other organizations and within the city to operate and do something that you're doing for that kind of cost is just amazing. So thank you.
Any other questions? You're, you're strictly funded by donations then, right?
Correct. Private donations, corporate donations, and grants.
Okay. Is this your only fundraiser this year? Do you have other fundraisers?
We do some informal fundraising. This one's our primary for the year.
Definitely serves a purpose. And are the women that come in there with the children, are they abused women normally, or?
Some of them are. We have a very strong domestic abuse program to help them, one, secure a safe place to live, but also make sure that they don't fall back into abusive situations.
Service is very well needed. We thank you very much for what you guys do. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, next up is Community Foundation of Western Nevada. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in today.
Hello, Chris.
How you doing, Chris?
Mayor Protem Smith, council members, thank you for having us here today. I'm Chris Askin, President and CEO of the Community Foundation of Western Nevada. We've been here for 19 years. There were some materials that we passed to the city in advance. We're not going to look at those now, but if you'd like to look at those following, as well as if you'd ever like to look up our materials and activities, it's nevadafund.org. In 2016, we received $6 million, or we distributed $6 million in grants. It's an impressive number, but most impressive when you think that that, that came from 34 scholarship funds with over 150 scholarships awarded, and hundreds of additional grants to support organizations in the community. Even more impressive perhaps was that in 2016, we received $21 million in new gifts to the foundation. Now, the Community Foundation serves as, as a way to help scale up philanthropy in our community, and it's really working. We, we received those gifts from hundreds of different donors, none of which is government support. It's all private support from people in this community that care about this place that we all live. We also have about $130 million in bequest arrangements that will be coming to the foundation someday. So you can imagine, thinking about an organization that's 19 years old, what this might look like in 20 years or 50 years. It's just going to be a phenomenally gigantic resource to the community. Our current assets are about $92 million, and will just continue to grow over time. I like to say $92 million and zero debt. That's, that's the structure. We have an amazing board of directors as well. Our, our goal is to really provide significant resources to the community, not just in the form of grants and support. Now, in our early history, we've, we've mostly focused on that area, but starting about four years ago, we started taking all of our connections that we have with donors and organizations and individuals such as yourselves and other opinion leaders and policymakers, as well as now corporations that are getting, getting engaged with the foundation, to try and look at tackling some of our community's more persistent issues. We've developed community leadership activities, and that's how we frame those. We now have about 24 different community leadership activities that we do in the community, and I'd like to share four with you, and then introduce this young man. So the first one is that we've been working with United Way on capacity building of nonprofit organizations in this community. It's not just about the great work that those organizations do, but it's helping to make sure that the leadership of those organizations is well-trained, and that the programs that they're operating are measured for impact and effectiveness, so that we can help steer more money to the programs that are most effective and doing the best work. More than 1,000 local residents have now participated in our estate planning classes that we offer for free. It's a seven-week series. We do that in coordination with KNPB, and sponsored by many charities in the community. Many of those individuals that participate in that class, for the first time ever, include the community in their trust and will plans. We recently attended the Housing Forum that was conducted over at Northern Nevada Hopes. Some of you may have heard of that or attended that. One of the things about housing is if we're going to really address our housing needs, we need to make sure that all of the stakeholders are a part of that conversation. So we're talking about all of the developers, everybody in your planning department, everybody who really has to be bought into the solutions that we have to implement together. So in the spirit of making sure that the, the great work that's being done by that Housing Forum group is extended to everybody in the community, we're going to be hosting a community conversation about that, and everybody's going to be invited, a much larger venue, on April 13th. So you'll all be receiving invitations to that. And that's a great example of how the Community Foundation can work to support leadership efforts that other groups are doing in the community. And then finally, we've started work on building a community endowment. Now, I believe that someday this will be hundreds of millions of dollars in an unrestricted endowment that our community, our collective community in the Truckee Meadows, can use in very strategic ways to leverage additional support and to help move past some things that are obstacles partly because of funding. And then finally, we've, we've been engaged in two much more large-scale initiatives. I believe you've heard about our work before, working with youth who are experiencing homelessness. Nick had shared a brief introduction to our work now to support our, our more than 8,000 caregivers in the community, unpaid caregivers who often have very difficult personal struggles at home to try and hold their family together financially, and well as provide the support for a loved one. And Nick is going to share more information about that. So thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Good afternoon, Mayor Protem Smith and fellow Sparks City Council members. Thank you for having us here today. So as Chris had mentioned, I have spoke a few times before about our Youth Network Initiative, and this is addressing the needs of youth who are homeless or aging out of the foster care system. And that's something that we're still working on, but we're more in the evaluation phases with that initiative. But I wanted to talk to you today about our Caregiver Support Initiative. And as Chris alluded, this is directed at the needs of unpaid family caregivers to seniors within Washoe County. And the idea for the initiative actually came from Grady Tarbutton, who some of you may know, and he was the former Director of Washoe County Senior Services. And he was the one who really brought this issue to our attention. And he identified that while the county provides many great resources for seniors themselves, there is oftentimes not enough emphasis placed on the needs of family caregivers. So our reasoning with the initiative is if we can provide better support and connection to resources to the caregivers, consequently, they will provide better care to, to their family members. And really with the way that we go about our initiatives is that we want to hear from those who are directly affected by it. So in this case, hearing from those family caregivers. Earlier in 2016, we held two public convenings where we heard from about 90 different caregivers, so current and previous caregivers. Councilmember Bybee, I believe that you participated in our convening, so thank you for your participation with that. And all the information that we collect from the caregivers, it identifies what we're going to do to create tangible solutions. The biggest need that we heard from caregivers that came up time and time again was access to information and knowing where community resources are. And so for us, we're not a direct service provider, but we can really engage all the different organizations and caring individuals to make more comprehensive solutions. So we're excited to announce that we're actually partnering with the Sanford Center for Aging and the Savit Medical Library. Right around the same time that we were doing our initiative, our, sorry, our convening process, they had applied for a grant to basically create a comprehensive resource database. So we are partnering with them on that, and this is going to be designed specifically for caregivers in our community. We acknowledge that there have been some other resource guides before that have good information. And really, we're pulling all of the great parts of those different resource guides to make sure that it's reflective of truly every community service. We actually finished our first round of data collection, and we found several hundred resources on there. And the name of the website is going to be washoe caregivers.org. And we're expecting that to be complete by September of this year. And based on the feedback we heard from those caregivers, we know that it's definitely a needed resource in our community. So taking advantage of all the existing supports that are out here, and making sure that caregivers can find it. We do want to first test the website with caregivers to know that it's actually going to be something they use. And then the two other items that we're working on as well to better support caregivers is developing a guidebook. So this wouldn't be a list of resources, but it's more so a manual that, let's say, all of a sudden, you find out that you have to provide 24/7 care to one of your parents. You're thrown into the situation, as caregivers often are. They don't know how to be a caregiver, and it can be very overwhelming that there will be this guidebook that discharge planners at the local hospital can provide, so that you can see immediate information on exactly how to be a caregiver. And talking to the discharge officers at all the different hospitals in the area, we found out that there isn't any guide that's currently being used, but they will definitely help distribute it to the different caregivers. And then lastly, we're focusing on building a discussion forum for caregivers. This may be in the form of an online forum or an email listserv. And the idea behind that is to take advantage of the local community knowledge. We know that there's lots of caregivers who have been in this situation before, who may have great insights. So someone could post a question about a caregiving topic, such as home modifications, and then we can hear from other members of the community saying, I've been in this situation before, and here's what I recommend. So that's an overview of our caregiver support initiative, and I'll open it up if there are any questions or comments. Thank you.
Questions or comments? So if you're all of a sudden thrust into being a caregiver, what's the, who, who should they call first, and they don't know what they're doing? You guys? Your, your website?
Yes, that will be the goal, is that, once the website and the guidebook is created, that we would be the first point of contact. Not because we're a service provider, but because we can direct you to all the different resources in the community.
Deere.
How are we going to, how are you guys going to get this word out? Because obviously, the need is huge. When we go to, we, we get to go to meetings with a lot of our senior citizens, and what you're talking about is a, a big question on their mind. There's a lot of need, and it seems like that need's only rising. And so when you guys are done with that in September, I can anticipate that would be something we'd like to help get out there so people have that. something we'd like to help get out there so people have that. What are your guys' means to do that?
Well, we do have money in our budget specifically with community outreach, but one of the big things is we have a steering committee that really plans the initiative, and that's comprised of about 50 different people representing all sorts of nonprofits, and we do have some members of the state agencies as well. So relying on them to help spread the word. We haven't even made a marketing plan yet, and that's something that we'll develop once we have the final products, but we will gladly take your help with spreading the word.
We also have, I know that our, we have our senior citizens, they're putting together a local forum that they're putting together. It'd be nice to, once that's fully put together, to put you in front of them so they can talk to you a little bit, and then you can hear straight from them some of the needs that they're seeing. And I don't know, it might, maybe if you needed a guinea pig in a sense to use your system and let them see, we might have some access to help you with that, too.
Thank you, yes. We'd definitely be interested. Hearing from caregivers, it's our most important concern, so we want to know how we can best help them. So thank you.
If I get phone calls from senior citizens, it's usually the people who just moved here and do not know about services, so this would be a good deal for them. They can go out there and get everything they need on there. Ms. Bybee.
Thank you. Thanks for all you do. And the forum that I was a part of was enlightening for me because there were so many people that had personal different situations that you couldn't imagine how some of them have and are still caring for loved ones, spouse, or parent that severely incapacitated 24/7 care, and then other people who didn't have. I mean, it varied, you know, the whole spectrum of who was there that day. And I really found, I'm glad that you're going to be doing the discussion forum and sharing because just that day, in a couple of hours, the resources and information that we could share with each other. Or I'm in that situation, this is who I contacted, or how to navigate the system from people who've been there. So those are going to be not necessarily your seniors, although you do have seniors caring for seniors, but it's going to be my generation and younger who are, and will be online to get that information. So I think the most valuable information is really talking to those people who have been caregivers because they've navigated through and they can point you, and I found that day, how many of them had valuable knowledge that I don't think has been tapped before. So I appreciate what you're doing. Great initiative and very much needed, especially as all of us baby boomers are aging, so.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for the presentation. Very nice.
Thank you for having us here. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to consent items. Anybody want to pull one? Looking for a motion? Mr. Dare.
I move to approve the consent items as they are.
Do I have a second?
Anybody?
Charlene, Ms. Bybee.
Second.
Here, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Passes unanimously. Okay, 9.1. Consideration of and possible approval of the mayor's recommendation of the appointment of Frank Peterson to the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Commission from the following potential appointees, Mary Brock, Scott Carey, James Fueens, James Gaba, and Frank Peterson.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem. The Director Neil Crutz, Assistant City Manager, on behalf of Mayor Bartini today, has selected Frank Peterson. He's seeking verification. Any questions?
Is Frank here? Is Frank Peterson here today?
Frank here? No. Okay, Mr. Lawson.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Frank Peterson to the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Commission.
Okay, do I have a second? Mr. Dare.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Passes unanimously. Thanks, Neil. 9.2. Consideration of possible approval of resolution, resolution number 3306, ratifying the declaration of the termination of a local emergency effective 5:00 p.m. on Friday, January 27, 2017. Mr. Crutz.
Mr. Crutz, Assistant City Manager. For the record here, pinch hitting for the city manager. The, what we're now calling Flood 2017.1, we felt like we're back in normal operations at the end of the day Friday on the 27th, so the city manager signed the termination of that emergency, and so we're seeking a ratification of that here today.
Lawson.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the declaration of a local emergency on January 27, 2017. And add, you guys did a great job. It's so good to see you guys so organized in the EOC and getting everything done and handled, and everything is looked at. Our citizens, I went down during the flood or right before the flood, and all of our businesses down there were well-informed, and it's just nice. It's sad that we have to have it, but we are way better at it than we were not too long ago. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, councilman. Your words mean a lot to us as a staff. We enjoy the work that we do, and it's nice to get the atta-boys when they're earned. Thank you.
Mr. Rabbit.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? And I will add, please, if you have sandbags out there, don't take them back yet.
Yeah, hang on.
Got a couple more possibilities coming up here. So, okay. Seeing none, please vote. I guess I'm the only one. There we go. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Neil. 9.3. Consideration of possible, and then I'm going to have some public comment on this after your presentation. Consideration of possible approval of Resolution Number 3307 directing staff to temporarily reject applications as provided herein for new land uses proposing 15 or fewer slot machines or privileged gaming license involving such proposed uses and matters properly related thereto. Mr. Thorn.
I need to speak now.
Protem Smith, members of the council. Doug Thornley at the City Attorney's Office for the.
Oh, Doug, I do have something that we should probably do first, and this will be from Councilwoman Bybee.
I just needed to inform you that I will be abstaining from this item because my husband works for a non-restricted gaming licensee that is a member of the Nevada Resort Association. I'm unsure whether this specifically rises to the level of a disqualifying conflict under the ethics and government law. I believe it is prudent to be cautious with respect to this type of issue. Therefore, as required by state law, I will not vote or advocate for or against passage of this measure. Thank you.
Bybee, go ahead.
As you recall, in January, the mayor threw you, Mayor Protem, gave direction to staff to look into whether or not certain restrictions as it relates to restricted gaming were appropriate as an amendment to Title V. To that end, what your staff has done is we've published draft, a draft amendment to the restricted gaming license ordinance. That amendment, that proposed amendment, is currently in a comment period for a business impact statement. There are not presently any pending restricted gaming applications over in business licensing. And so for the sake of ease and implying any sort of grandfathering provision that might be part of the ultimate solution to this issue, or to avoid muddying the waters further, what staff is proposing is a moratorium on restricted gaming license applications until July 1st of this year, or until such time as the council takes final action on the matter, whichever occurs first.
Before we open up the questions, I'm going to have the presentation. So I'm going to open up the public comment right now, and I do have one card. Sev Carlson, come on down. Anybody else wishing to speak on this item, please fill out a card. Welcome, Sev. How you doing? You have three minutes, sir.
Protem Smith, members of the council. Sev Carlson from Kemfer Kroll. I'm here on behalf of the Nevada Restaurant Services, Inc., doing business as Dottie's. Dottie's maintains its Northern Nevada headquarters here in Sparks. It also maintains five establishments here in Sparks that have business licenses, bar licenses, and restricted gaming licenses. In Northern Nevada, Dottie's employs about 258 people. A significant number of those employees are employed here in Sparks because of the Northern Nevada headquarters. Although Dottie's has no pending applications in front of the city, Dottie's is considering a handful of location expansions in Sparks that could be impacted by the moratorium and the proposed ordinance. Dottie's has seen similar ordinances in the past down in Clark County, in the city of Reno, and it's also seen different legislative attempts in Carson City that target Dottie's business model. I know we're not here today to talk about the ordinance, but I'm happy to meet with all of you to talk to you about Dottie's business model. We appreciate the current grandfather provision that's in the ordinance, that you're not going retroactively back in time like some other local governments have done, but we'd also like to point out to you the specifics that target Dottie's business model and don't target other businesses in the city of Sparks. Again, we look forward to providing you that information and meeting with you. Thank you for your time this afternoon.
Anybody else like to speak on this? Number three, 9.3. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for discussion.
Mr. Alonso, come on down.
Welcome.
Protem, members of the city council, I'm Michael Alonso with Lewis &amp; Roca. I'm here on behalf of the Nevada Resort Association, and just really wanted to, I wasn't sure I was going to speak.
Light on?
It's off now.
Okay.
Put it back on. You want the light off? The light's on, it's muted.
It's just the opposite here.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Should I go back through it, or?
No, I think you're fine.
Okay, and really, I didn't have any comments initially. I just wanted to be able to answer any questions the council members may have. I do think it's important to point out that while you're going through this process, it doesn't make any sense, I think, as your council wisely advised you to accept applications. And as you know, the ordinance we're proposing is perspective only and does not affect any of the locations, whether they're Dottie's or somebody else, that are currently existing in the city of Sparks. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council.
There's public comments. We don't usually ask questions during that, but we'll have, we have a question and answer period. We can ask our attorney.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience like to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll break to the council for discussion. Mr. Lawson.
Doug, what's to prevent a slew of applications coming in during the moratorium period up till July 1?
That would be the purpose of the moratorium, so if an application came through the door, it would be rejected.
July 1 allows us to do what?
July 1 is frankly a date that I picked that I thought was reasonable under the circumstances that would not limit applications too severely and would give the council and city staff an opportunity to get their feet under their respective selves with respect to the issue.
July 1 is your intent?
That is the intent, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, seeing none, we're looking for a motion. Mr. Dare.
I move to approve the moratorium as suggested by our council.
Lawson.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes 401 abstention. Thank you, Doug. 9.4. Consideration of possible approval of reimbursement to the city of Reno in the amount of $401,849.70 for the Sparks share of construction bid awarded to KG Walters for the Tom Wharf Nitrification Tower Control Valve. Yes, sir.
Turn it off.
Light on.
There we go. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the council, Michael Drinkwater, Tom Wharf Treatment Plant Manager. You have before you, for your consideration, one of our standard reimbursement agreements with the city of Reno for a capital improvement project at the treatment plant. This particular project is Phase 2 of the Nitrification Tower Valve Rehabilitation. The city of Reno manages the CIP. They manage the design and the open competitive bid. KG Walters was the low-responsive bidder, so they have already awarded, awaiting for our approval of the reimbursement to go ahead with construction, which I am before you asking for now. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? That is the total amount of, that's not partial. That's what we pay for 401?
Yes, sir. 401 is the city of Sparks obligation. $1,281,000 is the total project.
Any questions or comments? Looking for a motion? Mr. Lawson.
I move to approve the reimbursement to the city of Reno for Sparks' share of the Nitrification Tower Control Valve Phase 2 project at Tom Wharf.
Mr. Dare.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Michael. You're doing 9.5. Consideration of possible approval of consultant agreement for construction management services with HDR Engineering.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the council. This agreement is with HDR Engineering to provide construction management services for the project you just approved, the Nitrification Tower Control Valve Rehab Phase 2. HDR was the design engineer. Makes sense to have them provide the construction management services for continuity throughout the project. So they were selected, obviously, by the city of Reno. We concur that that was a good decision, and we're asking for your permission to enter into that agreement for them to provide such services.
Lawson.
Well, I guess we have to approve this one, too. I'm going to move to approve the consultant agreement with HDR Engineering, Inc.
Mr. Rabbit. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Mike, and you're on for number 9.6.
Yes, sir.
Consideration of possible approval of reimbursement to the city of Reno in the amount of $123,440.95 for Sparks' share of a contract with KG Walters.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the council. This project was similar to the first one I was before you just moments ago, an approved capital improvement project at the treatment plant. This one is for some rehabilitation to the aeration systems at the plant. It was in the JCC-approved capital improvement program for this fiscal year. Reno managed the design, put it out to bid. KG Walters was the low-responsive bidder. They have already, the city of Reno has already awarded to KG, awaiting our approval of the reimbursement, which is before you now. I think it is a completely, it was a reasonable bid. KG Walters is a known contractor to us. We like their work, so I am asking for you to approve that at this time.
Okay, questions or comments? Ms. Bybee.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
I move to approve the reimbursement to the city of Reno for Sparks' share of the Aeration Piping System Modification Project at Tom Wharf in an amount not to exceed $123,440.95.
Mr. Rabbit.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Dare?
No.
No? Okay, seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you. 9.7. Consideration of and possible direction to staff to initiate amendments to Title II Administration and Personal and Title, I'm sorry, Administration, Personal, and Title VII Health and Welfare. Mr. Rundell.
Good afternoon. Mr. Protem, Spark City Council. Jim Rundell, Planning Manager, here representing an item sponsored by Councilman Smith at the last Spark City Council meeting for potentially instructing staff to initiate amendments, as read into the record a minute ago, amendments to Title II and Title VII. The process for code amendments are, it comes up at a city council meeting, and then we, staff brings it back. Basically, the council would then vote on whether or not to force staff to incorporate that into the work program. This amendment here relates back to the Property Preservation Code that the city council approved in 2015. The code enforcement division, along with other divisions in the city, including Building and Fire, now have the opportunity to use the civil citation process. And it's been very effective, but staff has identified a couple of mechanisms that we believe could be made clearer. We've also found a couple of definitions in the Title VII, and that conflict with definitions in Title 20, which when we're doing code enforcement, is not a good thing, and we'd like to, opportunity to be able to fix those, fix those problems. We believe that moving forward with this process could, could help convey a clear law or code to the public, and that concludes my presentation.
Mr. Lawson.
Jim, now with this, we're going to add some teeth to where we can actually lean the property, and we don't get into this. I gave my house up to the bank, and the bank says it's not theirs, and the guy who used to live there says it's not his, and so we're going to have some teeth in here so we can actually lean the property, and whoever ends up owning it will pay us to take care of that property.
Yeah, that's the perspective of staff, is to make it so that there are times when the code enforcement staff gets stuck between, I don't know what to call them, delinquent property owners, they've walked away, whatever the appropriate term is, and the banks don't necessarily take the property back over, and we have code enforcement issues, and they don't necessarily care that they're getting fined. We want to be able to make sure that. We want to be able to make sure that problems get, get rectified or corrected in that time in between claimed ownership.
There's one property in Ward Two that I've been fighting for six years, so I'm looking forward to this happening.
May or may not know which property you're talking about.
I'm sure you know, I'm sure the whole council knows who it is, but it's, it's been a royal pain in the city's behind, and we need to get it done, and thank you for getting this taken care of.
And that's that void that you found out about after the, it was all in place for the year and a half, or whatever it was we've been doing it, so.
Yes, and this is the upside to doing code amendments and updating the code progressively, like Sparks tends to do, the Sparks Council, is that you go out and use it, and then you find where it can be tweaked. Now, I wouldn't call this an overhaul or, or anything like that, it's tweaks to make it more effective to implement the council's policy and direction when they initially approved it.
Mr. Dare.
And just for clarity, because if there's people watching this out there, that, so if there's something they see, how, how does this work? So can you just give the understanding of this when people talk about the enforcement portion, again, just for our citizens? So if somebody sees something they don't like, or if something's going on that seems to be breaking this, and?
If you, if you believe you see a code enforcement violation, a land use violation, it's not an emergency type of thing, call in to the planning line, the code enforcement line, and we'll take that, that call, and we will, we will do an inspection on the site of which they've identified, and ensure that it is or is not a code violation. And then when we do find code violations from property, currently, all of our, all of our inspections through code enforcement are done by complaint basis. So if we get a complaint, like I said, we'll, we'll process it and go out on the site and identify whether or not it is a violation of the municipal code, and, and then we do courtesy letters to identify, to let the property owners know. And then the officers work with the property owners to try to fix the code violation, they come to an agreement, and that's the upside to the administrative discretion that's in the code, is you can, if it's a, if it's a yard issue and, on a Tuesday, and then it snows a foot and a half on a Wednesday, they don't have to fix it by Thursday, that kind of thing. But sometimes we do get calls, and we refer them to the appropriate division of the city to, to fix the problem, whether it's police, or, or building, or fire.
Or sometimes we get people thinking that because we have these, that we're running around just writing tickets and things like that, or some form of that, and so.
No, we don't do that, to further up on, follow up on that, Councilman Dare, that's correct. If we do identify that a violation is, is at a site from a complaint, we send a courtesy letter, and they have a, a certain amount of time before we'll send a second courtesy letter. And it's when we don't hear from the property owner for quite some time that we'll send a third letter to identify that if you don't fix it, you could get fined, or, or other procedures that, that we've been directed to do. But it is, it is not, they do not get fined from day one.
Mr. Lawson.
Also, for clarity, we are going to have an appeals process, so there, that will be in this ordinance also. So if I feel like I've got a citation from the city in error or judgmentedly wrong, then I have a place where I can appeal that decision.
Yes, Councilman Lawson, there is an appeal procedure in there currently, and we don't anticipate changing that unless we see some language that could be refined to make it more clear how the procedure works. And of course, this, this proposal, once we draft it, and we'll work with the attorney's office, we already have been. And also, I brought the code enforcement staff here today so they could see how this process works and, and see the council in action.
A lot of them.
But we would bring this, this would, of course, come back for review by the city council for ultimate approval, but yes, there, there will still be a appeals procedure in there.
Ms. Drabbitt.
Oh, no, Councilman Lawson has a question. Just by me.
So really, Jim, what this is, having instituted the changes, the property preservation and the new codes, this is kind of a cleanup of things that you discovered once, once you were trying to enforce, and with the new code changes, so looking at things from inconsistencies with other, other codes in the real world, as you got out there and worked with all the new changes, because there were so many changes that were made, this is kind of clean up and make more effective the things that we already passed a year ago, a year and a half ago.
Correct, the word I think would be appropriate would be refinement of, of what was there. One of the aspects of a code enforcement officer likes is when they can show, like Councilman Dare brought up, and they go out to a person's property and identify a violation, they can show them in very plain English, black and white, I like to say, of why they're there. It's not gray, and so there's, while there's room for discretion, as the council knows in Title 20, we added discretion. Sometimes you don't want the discretion, you want it very clear as to what's expected and what happens if you don't take care of the issue. And utilizing the new code from two years ago, we found, I think, some opportunities to make it, to refine it and make it clearer.
And, you know, to make it clear, to make them understand that it's just not them, it's enforced with everybody the same way.
Correct.
I want to, I want to say thank you to you and the code enforcement, because your process that you, you're using now gets everything done, and more importantly, the follow-through on it, and it gives you guys a path to it, and I really do appreciate everything you guys do, I know it's tough sometimes, and, and you got five council members up here, and, and the mayor, talking about a phone call we got, and you guys are right on top, and it's, it is appreciated, thank you. Okay, any more questions, comments? Looking for a motion? Okay, Mr. Dare.
I move to approve, as, as Jim shared.
Ms. Bybee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously, okay, moving on to number 9.8, consideration and possible direction to initiate amendments to Title 20. Title 20 zoning code of the Sparks Municipal Code. Who's coming down? You going to do it?
Yes.
Okay.
Pro Tem, Jim Rundell, Planning Manager, here to present on this item. This is, this is similar to what we just talked about in item 9.7. The city council approved the Sparks zoning code overhaul in October of 2015, and staff has been using that code ever since. The code has worked very well, I think the council has even gotten some comments on the administrative discretion and the, the reducing the barriers to development, I think Councilman Lawson directed us to do quite a while ago. With such a huge and massive overhaul to the zoning code, using it for that amount of time, we've identified similarly a couple of items where we think we can, or we need to clean up and, and refine, and we're asking that the council direct that for our work program with this item.
Questions, comments? You know, and getting back to what I was talking about earlier, a lot of these complaints come to us through another homeowner that are adjacent to what's going on, and so when they can get an answer right away that we're working on it now, they really appreciate that, and they really, really appreciate that, so thanks for that. Mr. Lawson.
I'm ready to make a motion if you have no more questions.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Move to direct staff to initiate the code amendments to Title 20 zoning code of the Sparks Municipal Code to address inconsistencies, oversights, and comprehensive plan policies and providing other matters, other matters properly relating thereto.
Okay, Ms. Bybee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously, thanks, Jim. It's over, Jim. Are you up here for the next one, too? I thought Doug would be coming down. Okay.
Man, he's the man today.
9.9. This guy didn't mean to, I didn't want to kick you out.
He doesn't likes that chair.
I know, he does. You're good at it. Discussion and possible direction by the city council to intervene in the litigation regarding Washoe County's bill draft request regarding the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency's governing board, introduced as Assembly Bill 39. Go ahead, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Pro Tem, Jim Rundell, Planning Manager for item 9.9. Last, at the last city, Sparks City Council meeting, Chairwoman of, Councilman By, that's a, combining two boards, Chairwoman of the Regional Planning Governing Board, Councilwoman Bybee, asked staff to bring back this item for the city council to consider at this city council meeting. In 2002, the city of Sparks, Washoe County, and the city of Reno, through the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency, signed a settlement agreement that identified regional plan growth for the area. Through that, through that settlement agreement, there were items in there on submitting legislation to the state legislature. It is the opinion of the Regional Planning Governing Board that the Board of County Commissioners violated that agreement, and they have filed suit in district court. This item would be for the city of Sparks City Council to consider intervening in that lawsuit and between Board of County Commissioners and the Truckee Meadows Regional Governing Board. For more background, the city of Reno also chose at their council meeting last week to intervene on the side of the RPGB. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, questions or comments? Mr. Lawson.
Well, as the former chair of the Regional Planning Governing Board, this is something I believe the city of Sparks has to do. We have basically 17 locally elected officials, seven at Reno, five at Washoe County, and five here. There's three of them that want to change this, the rest are playing well in the sandbox together. So I think it sends a message that we need to play as a team, but more so, we need to follow the rules when we are going to make a change to a particular regional board like that, so I think it's inherent, incumbent on us to follow through and be involved.
Ms. Bybee.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. As Chairwoman of the Regional Planning Governing Board this year, I asked that this be brought before the council. Litigation is not something any of us take lightly, and none of us on the regional governing board, probably any of us sitting here, are happy to have to go into litigation with this issue. However, I strongly believe that because there was a process that the county did not follow, and it's a violation of NRS, it's a violation of the settlement agreement from 2002, and a violation of the policy of the Regional Planning Governing Board, so there's three violations of noticing their intent to take items to the legislature. They need to come to the regional governing board for, anyone who's watching or listening to this, what the issue is, is that there's a process to do that, requires 60 days notice, coming to the regional governing board with possible legislation before filing a bill draft request and taking it to Carson City. The hope always being that we act, we try to work things out together, and the whole purpose of the regional planning structure was to get all three entities working well together for the benefit of our region. So I would, I strongly support Sparks being part of that voice as we look at the legislature and the court system. Mainly, the, the litigation is to remove, is for cease and desist, basically, I'm not sure that's the legal terminology, you can give me the.
Rid of mendamis.
Rid of mendamis, to just have them remove, to pull the BDR, to pull the bill draft down in Carson City. And I really feel like a lot of the issues that the county has with regional planning, and I have offered this at our last meeting and continue to, a lot of issues for the county in working with Reno and Sparks can be resolved as we do our regional plan update, and that process, we need, we are starting on now to revisit regional planning as our five-year update, and a lot of issues can be resolved there, and I'd rather see we did that there than in the court, but right now, kind of feel like this is where we are, and I think it would send a strong message of support, so I'm, I will be supporting this measure. Thank you.
Mr. Dare.
I just make a motion?
Sure. Go ahead.
I move to intervene on the side of the Regional Planning Government Board in the lawsuit filed against Washoe County for violating the settlement agreement and specific Nevada revised statutes.
Okay, we have a motion, looking for a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously, thanks, Jim, thank you very much. Okay, move on to public hearing items, 10.1, presentation, discussion, and possible approval of a memorandum of understanding between the city of Sparks and International Association of Firefighters Local 1265. Mr. Kruetz.
Afternoon again, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the city council. For the record, Neil Kruetz, Assistant City Manager, and also your chief labor negotiator. I am here today before you with a memorandum of understanding that would modify the collective bargaining agreement we have with the IAFF, or the firefighters' union, that goes back to, to address a policy decision that the council made last August. You recall that on August 8th of last year, we brought you an item for consideration relating to whether or not we wanted to provide limited paramedic service in the city of Sparks. At that meeting, we had heard right before the meeting that the health department wanted a little bit of time to verify that our data was right, so we asked you to continue it to the 22nd. They conducted their review, the data was good. On the 22nd, you gave us direction to move forward with implementation of a paramedic program starting in the northern part of our city. So we, according, in accordance with, with essentially good labor practice and the law, we, we began a meet and confer process with IFF Local 1265 to talk about the change in job conditions, where we were going to begin requiring and offering a paramedic service within the city of Sparks. What you have before you today is really the result of, of those discussions that, that took place between the 22nd of August and really the, the end of calendar year 2016. And, and the result of this, this MOU will do several things, first of which is to create a new job title and, and set a pay scale for the new position of firefighter, paramedic. We'll add a special pay for paramedic available to any firefighter, fire apparatus operator, and fire captain who currently has that certification. And then we also, since we were in the, in the realm of, of special duties, we, we took a look at the Emergency Medical Technician Advanced, or EMTA, certification, and right now, we pay a special pay of, of three and a half percent for that, for anybody in the, in the suppression service that has that certification. And we, we worked out a, a process with, with IFF to convert that to a portion of their base pay, and, and, and take the special pays, you know, begin to build them into the base pay and, and, and not have them as special any longer. We did that in exchange for, because in every contract, there has to be a give and a, and a take, you know, we're giving the additional base pay, and they are agreeing to have the EMTA certification as a basic requirement of employment with the city, so they'll have to maintain that, that, that certification as a condition of their employment. So that's really the, the long and the short of, of what we did. In, in terms of, of the additional fire, or the paramedic service, certainly, we were asking the employees inside our fire department to provide a service that requires a, a greater level of, of training, and they, as a result, would like to be paid more for providing that additional service. Again, it makes sense, it's, you know, give something, get something. So we, we worked jointly with them to, to look at the, essentially, the labor market in our area, and, and we agreed as a, as a group to look at, at five other fire services, if you will, in, that really constitute our labor market. Reno Fire Department, Carson City Fire Department, Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District, Tahoe Douglas and the North Lake Tahoe Fire Protection District, so that's kind of our group of five comparators, and to see how, how we compare to them. Each of those agencies offers, offers the paramedic service. And, and so we conducted a salary study. The, the folks in the, in the, in the fire union in 1265 like to approach the world from a base pay, and they like to tie everything to base pay. From a city perspective, we like to consider more of the, the big picture, or the total cost of employment. You know, the, certainly, we, we issue paychecks every two weeks to all of our employees, but we also provide benefits, we make purse payments, and, and things of that nature. So we like to look at what's the total cost of, of a position. So putting, putting that together with a, a, a loose policy that we've worked under before, direction from the council, and that is that you want to be within 5% of, of the labor market, plus or minus 5% of what's, what's the middle of the market doing, so that we conceptually stay competitive as a, as an organization. So with, with that as kind of the, of the setting, we did, we did work on a, on a, an additional pay that, that ended up, what's proposed to you today in the MOU is a six and a half percent additional base pay for those members of the firefighter or the firefighter paramedic job family, if you will, that are going to provide that service, that additional pay. on top of the base firefighter pay. And in looking at the market and wanting to be competitive, that would put us in looking at it as a percentage of that total compensation for somebody who's maxed out, so they, you know, they're at the top of their salary schedule, and the maximum amount of benefits that they can get, it puts us at, just on the positive side, or just on the high side of zero. We would be at 0.6% above the average. So very competitive, well within that plus or minus 5. On the low end, or somebody who's just coming in, we're a little higher, we're at plus 3.4%. But by the time you're at the very end of your career, we are 2% under the average. So we're right around where the middle of the market is, and as a staff, are very comfortable to sit in front of you today and recommend approval of this MOU. One additional item that I want to point out before we get into the cost of the proposal, is that one of the things that was concerning for both sides, both the management side and the labor side, was if, as we create a new job description, and knowing the way economies go up and go down, how would we approach that if we were able to find ourselves in a position needing layoffs again? You know, we were there, you know, several years ago, you know, we laid off a third of our employees within the city. We're all hoping we'll never be there again, but one of the things that the attorneys, particularly in the city that I have worked with in my 20 years, have told me, is begin every agreement with the end in mind. Plan for the worst, so that you've got it written down, and everybody knows how it's going to go. And certainly, as, one concern that would naturally come from the labor side is that if we're hiring new employees, we're going to have this shiny new skill, if you'll permit me, that aren't we going to, as management, going to want to hold on to that shiny new skill, and maybe at the cost of some people that might not have that skill. Valid question. And looking at it strictly speaking, from the management point of view, if we're going to be paying for a service, I want to make sure we're going to hold on to that service. But we didn't want to put ourselves in a situation where we're going to be essentially having to look at the separating long-term employees from the city in name of the new service. We were able to lay out a combined, combined seniority table, if you will, so that if we do find ourselves in a situation that we have to consider layoffs in the future, we will rank in terms of seniority, the firefighters and the firefighter/paramedics, into a single list that will be seniority-based, that will follow the traditional civil service, last-in, first-out process. Which, from an employee perspective, you know, it certainly plays to the more tenured employees, and it's something that, you know, we value our employees here, and so I like it from that perspective. Looking at it from more of a, how do we continue to provide this new service that we've told the public we're going to do? We went through, and in, starting at the bottom of the hypothetical new list and working your way up, before we got into a situation where we were challenging ourselves to be able to provide paramedic service, we got three engine companies into layoffs. And what that told me is that's well beyond the realm of possibility. If things have gotten so dire within the city of Sparks that we're looking at laying off three engine companies, we have a lot bigger problems than are we going to continue to provide paramedic service or not. So that allowed, you know, me as a management representative to sit here in front of you and say that we believe the combined seniority list in that situation is the way to go. It does honor the employees that have already given us their time, and it does, at the same time, allow us, under any kind of normal operations, to still provide that service even if things go south. So with that, the last thing that I have to be sure to cover today, and that's, you know, per state law, and the reason that it's on your item here as a public hearing today, is we have to talk about the finances. Certainly, that 6.5% has to come from somewhere. And what we are proposing here today is that 6.5%, we've looked at it, and it will cost you, for a whole fiscal year, a net increase of $116,000. That is to provide the 6.5% for the new firefighters that we're going to fill vacancies here later in the spring. Also in there, and one thing that I realized I did neglect, is that, you know, we're offering this special pay, this additional pay for firefighter, firefighter/paramedics, fire apparatus operators, and fire captains. The thought there being that, while the basic amount of service, and 90% of the service will be provided by the paramedics and the firefighters, it's still going to be a good thing for, from a city perspective, to have FAOs and captains out there who've got that certification. It's a second set of hands should you need it. It's another set of eyes looking over things to make sure that we're providing, you know, the top shelf service that we're accustomed to providing. So those folks, certainly it makes sense that there's an interest for us to have them maintain that certification. What we agreed on with IFF, and it's contained in the MOU that's before you today, is that fire apparatus operators and captains who have and maintain the paramedic certification would be paid an additional 3%. Not the 6.5% that the paramedics are going to earn, they're not going to use those skills as often, but it's still in our interest and in their interest to maintain that certification. So that's built into the MOU. Firefighters at plus 6.5%, FAOs and captains at plus 3. Additionally, and finally, I think I'm about done, is that the city is agreeing to pay for the maintenance of the paramedic certification going on. We're not going to pay somebody to get it. We've had a few who have gone and done it, and it's very laborious, time-consuming, challenging, and albeit expensive process to get. But it's a service that we're going to enjoy, that our citizens are going to enjoy the benefit of, so we feel it's appropriate that the city pay for the maintenance of the certification once it's been obtained. So with that, it's a full fiscal year. We anticipate it's going to cost you $116,000 additional dollars. And with that, I'd be happy to try and answer any questions that you've got.
Do you have any other public comments?
Yes, sir.
This is a public hearing, so anybody in the audience wishing to speak at this Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for questions or comments. I have a few questions. So we're not going to hire any firefighters that don't have that certification?
If you prove this today, the answer to that question is no. Going forward, we would be paramedics to get in the door.
Okay, and if somebody, since we're going to pay for the maintenance of that certification, if they let it lapse, what happens to this person?
They would be subject to discipline for not meeting the, you know, the conditions of their, of the basic job description. And, you know, we, I hate to say it this way, but dole out discipline in a progressive manner in the city of Sparks. And certainly, it would start with a conversation, hey, you let this thing lapse, there are opportunities to get things back. But it could ultimately lead to somebody that didn't have and maintain that, that they might face termination for a result of it.
Up and to, including termination.
Up and to, and including termination. And there is then, there is one thing that I do want to point out, and it relates to the EMTA, the Advanced Emergency Medical Technician Certification, that we're building into the job description. We do have two employees in the suppression division who are very near the end of their career, you know, within a couple of years of retiring, who do not have that certification. It's currently not a require of their job description right now. It's a special pay. You have it, you get the pay. You don't have it, you don't. It didn't make any sense to require those two gentlemen to run out and get this EMTA certification, only to then retire within, you know, within a two-year period. So what we have done is we've essentially written in an out clause for those two specific individuals that says, it becomes the part of the basic job description for everybody else. Everybody else will get that additional pay. The two gentlemen that don't have the EMTA won't get the additional base hourly pay that I already spoke to. So I apologize for that oversight, but just trying to, you know, live in the real world. Yes, it would be great if we threw a switch and everybody had it, but that's not realistic, so.
Bybee.
So Neil, following up on what you just said, on the two that will be exempt, will everyone else who's currently working, will it be required that they obtain the paramedic?
Everybody else already, oh, then, no, I'm sorry. I got ahead of myself and started filling in words that you wanted. Apologize. We are not going to require that people go out and get paramedic that don't already have it. But in order to enjoy the extra paramedic pay, you would have to have it.
So it's just new hires absolutely required on hiring. Couple other questions. On the maintenance of the certification, is that included in the budget? The $116,000 includes maintenance of the certifications? From April 3rd to the end of June, and where is that money coming from?
Roughly, okay, it would be roughly a quarter of a fiscal year. So, you know, in round numbers, $30,000 is what we are looking at for, to finish up this fiscal year. If the fire chief does pull the trigger on April 3rd, is, you know, and that's what we're trying to set up, is that he can pull that trigger when he's ready. And that would come out of the existing budget authority that we have.
So there does exist money in the budget to do this? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dare.
You know, one of the things I get to do is I get to serve on the health board, and I get to see a lot of these stats. And I say, just to our citizens, some of them might wonder, why is this really that important? And I think it's important people realize that many times, we are the first ones there, and for some time, of helping somebody. And so what this does is, excuse me, it brings safety and health quickly to those who have need. And so I think it's very important. And I don't know, I don't know if you have stats on that, or what, or something you could say to that, but I think it's important, as we're talking about, so people don't just say, oh, they're spending money, they're spending money, but this actually directly will affect them.
And certainly, we had the stats in great detail when we were in front of the council last August, and I believe that is what led to the council saying, yeah, we're there, we're not just there, you know, right ahead of REMSA, we're there a significant amount of time, to the point where we can make, you know, positive impacts and outcomes if we show up with that higher level of service. And I'd like to invite the fire chief Maples. Is there something you'd like to come up and say to that?
For the record, Chris Maples, Sparks Fire Chief. No, I think Chief Garrison gave you guys a very detailed briefing on the need and necessity for us to go to the paramedic level of service back in August. Really, nothing's changed. We're moving forward with implementing it. Ideally, it would be April 3rd, but we have to finish our protocols, we need some different certifications from the state. Assuming all of that gets resolved quickly, I'll move ahead with it. April 3rd, like Neil said, we have the money in the budget this year to do that. If, for some reason, we're not ready, April 3rd, but then we'll do it as soon as we are.
Chief, I had a question. What is the, because my memory is not great, but I know it's very high percentage, percentage of calls that fire answers that are medical-related?
It's over 80%.
Okay, and I think that was the biggest of the information they gave us. You know, you assume it's probably a lot of medical, but it's such a vast majority of medical calls that I think when you presented the reasoning for doing this, it just made sense, because that really is what you're doing, and it would save lives.
And Sparks is not unique in that. I mean, nationwide, the fire service, the majority of the calls that we respond to nowadays are medical in nature.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Neil. Looking for a motion? Ms. Bybee.
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding with the International Association of Firefighters, Local 1265.
We have a second, Mr. Dare?
I second that.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Thanks, chief. Okay, we do not have any planning and zoning items, so we'll move on to comments. Anybody, I'll open up the public comment. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for comments from the city council, city manager. Mr. Dare, you up? Let me get your name up there.
I'm on the phone.
Okay. Anybody else?
The office.
Neil, do you have something?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next item, business, German.
I moved.
We have a motion to second, any further discussion? We are adjourned. Thank you very much.